We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. You're hereby notified that the regular December 8th, 2016 meeting of the Palacka Commission has been rescheduled and is called to be held on Monday, December 12th, 2016 at the regular meeting place of the Palacka City Commission, Palacka City Hall, 201 North Second Street, Palacka, Florida, to commence at 6:00 PM or as soon as possible thereafter, following the Palacka CRA meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM. The meeting was rescheduled during the regular session of the Commission on November 10th, 2016, to allow members of the City Commission to attend the Florida Lever City's Legislative Agenda Meeting, scheduled December 8th through 9th in Orlando, Florida. Terrell Hill Mayor, Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown, James Norwood Jr., Justin Campbell, and Rufus Borum. We'll have our invocation at this time by Reverend Eddie Stith, Associate Pastor, First Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Wayne McLean. Will we all please stand at this time?
Would you join me in prayer? Father, I thank you for tonight, God. I thank you for this commission that you have assembled, God, to lead this great city into tomorrow. Father, as we celebrate today, students of this month, God, from all across this county, God, they are our future leaders. And Father, I pray right now over every soul that's in this place. I pray for your favor over this city. I pray for your wisdom over our commission. And I pray, Father, that you give them the insight and the strategy that we need to lead this great city into tomorrow, leaving it better tomorrow than we found it yesterday. We thank you for your son as we celebrate him in this season, his birth, our Redeemer, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Stith and Mr. McLean. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Mr. Borum?
Present.
Mr. McCampl?
Present.
Mr. Norwood?
Here.
All members are present, accounted for, you have four.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our November 12th meeting and also our December 6th Economic Development Tour?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a simultaneous motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognitions, item one on our agenda. We're gonna ask that Mr. Conrad Van Rensburg come forward at this time. And anyone from the Putnam County Historical Society that's present with you?
Well, we've got a couple of members.
We have a couple of members present?
Yeah, they'd probably prefer to say see them.
Can you at least, by show of hand, can you at least let us recognize the members that are here today?
They always send me out to these.
We've got a proclamation for the Historic Historical Society's 50th Anniversary. Whereas the Putnam County Historical Society was established in 1961 and incorporated as a nonprofit organization with the state of Florida in June of 1966. And whereas the Putnam County Historical Society is dedicated to advancing knowledge, understanding, and appreciation of the history of the city of Palacka and Putnam County, and has helped our citizens become more aware of our rich heritage. And whereas the Putnam County Historical Society, founded by a group of foresighted and dedicated individuals, has been a repository for documents, photographs, objects, and collections related to the history of our community. And whereas the Putnam County Historical Society, in cooperation with the city of Palacka, has furnished, helped maintain, and provide dozens from the Bronson Mulholland House and the Putnam Historic Museum. And whereas the Putnam County Historical Society members continue to volunteer and serve our community in the important work of preserving and interpreting our local history. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the city of Palacka, Florida, together with the members of the Palacka City Commission, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th Anniversary of the Putnam County Historical Society in the city of Palacka, calling this observance to the attention of our citizens, congratulating and commending the Putnam County Historical Society for its 50 years of service to our community, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating this anniversary and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palacka, Florida, on this 12th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2016. Terrell Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood Jr., Commissioners.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on behalf of the Putnam County Historical Society, the whole Commission, I also want to thank you. And the city of Palacka really needed to be part of this proclamation because we have been having a partnership for over 50 years, working together. Just in the last year, together with the city, we had the Smithsonian Display at the River Center, which was very successful. At the moment, we've got monthly programs at the Bronson Mulholland House, which will continue next year. And we're also planning on opening a section in the museum for the Central Academy, coming up next year for their anniversary. So thank you again. I'll let you get to the more important thing, the kids, who hopefully will be our members in the future, and enjoy the night. Thank you.
Next is employee recognition. FGFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, City of Palacka Finance Department. Mr. Reynolds. And the news release reads as follows. "The Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the city of Palacka by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. For its comprehensive annual financial report, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individual's department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. This has been presented to the Finance Department of the city of Palacka. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR." The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with its offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, DC. And the certificate reads as follows. "Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the city of Palacka, Florida, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2015."
I just wanna thank my employees in the Finance Department, as well as our audit firm, Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram. They've been our auditors for a while, and they really help us in achieving the award. This is the 24th year. All of these are 20 years, and then there's a plaque in the back with three buttons on it. This one will make 24, so just wanna thank everybody that was involved. Thanks.
Got a special recognition, and we're also gonna ask this young man to come join me as we get ready for our Student of the Month Awards. Commissioner Norwood, would you please come here? There's a special presentation for Commissioner Norwood, and it says, "Commissioner James Norwood Jr., Palacka City Commission, January 3rd, 2000 through January 9th, 2017, in recognition of 17 years of dedicated service as Palacka City Commissioner, Group One, with sincere gratitude for the citizens and staff of the city of Palacka, Florida, presented by the Palacka City Commission. Mayor Terrell Hill, Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown, Commissioners Rufus Borum, and Commissioner Justin Campbell. We're gonna miss you. So Commissioner Norwood is that one person who never has to say anything, he can kinda give you the aye, and you know to stay on task. But I've known Commissioner Norwood for a long time. He's one who's truly been dedicated to this community. He's a good man, a God-fearing man. We applaud you and the work that you've done in this community. We know that it's not gonna stop. We will be calling on you. And so you can run, but you can't hide. But we look forward to what God has in store for you in the future, and we thank you for the 17 years of service to this community and the many more that are not recognized by that plaque. But again, just thank you. You got anything you wanna say? No crying?
I really thought I'd say it all at that last meeting, 'cause I wanted to kinda do away with all this, but one of the things that I do wanna say is thank you to my family and friends who supported me all these years, but also to the citizens of Palacka, who's given me their proxy for the last 17 years. I'm extremely grateful, and I'm extremely honored to have served. And one of the things that I feel that we've done, we've really made some progress in this city, and I think with the Commission as it sits today, sits now, and sits in the future, I think it will continue to make the progress, same type of progress as well. And I would just say to the Commission, keep moving the city forward. There's a lot of work ahead of you, and I think that I will support you and the community will support you, continue to support you as well, and we look forward to a greater Palacka. Thank you.
This is from your commission. It's an angel for your shoulder, and I hope it'll go with you, and every time you look at us, you'll think about the work we've done. We agree, disagree, but not fall out, and that's what's happened since we've been here all these years.
Thank you. As I always say, Student of the Month has been canceled until next month. So I know most of you are here just for the beginning of the meeting, but this is one of the most important parts of the Commission meeting, and it's actually one of the more, the favorite parts for us, because it's an opportunity for us to really take an opportunity to say thank you to our young people. But before we say thank you to them, you know there are a lot of family and friends who are here today, and we want you guys to just stand up right now so we can recognize you as well, because they would not be here if it wasn't for you. And in the back of the room, there is a group of individuals that are lined to my right, to the far right of the room, who work tirelessly every day, and they don't often get the praise that they deserve for working with our young people. And we wanna make sure that we just take time out to thank our educators for the work that they do with our children as well, because without you, they wouldn't be here either. So as we call out the names of the students, we'd ask that a representative from the school accompany the child up as they receive their award. We will ask everyone to line up across the front of the room. After we finish presenting all the certificates, we will take a break at that time, and we'll take a photo for the newspaper with the group of students. After that photo's taken, we'll line the students up on the side. The family can come up. We'll take individual pictures with each one so that you can memorialize this precious moment. And so that's what we'll do at this time. And we will start out from Browning Pierce Elementary, Jasmine Grammer. Congratulations. CL Overturf Jr., sixth grade center, Jello Walker. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Cordae Munjin. From EH Miller School, Joby Boone. From Jan Zaylong Elementary, Tarian Valentine. From Jenkins Middle School, Caleb Mayberry. From Kelly Smith Elementary School, Gabrielle Farnell. From Mellon Elementary, Lilian Griffiths. I'm hoping not to butcher it. From Mosley Elementary School, Dejeané Athlin. From Palacka High School, Kaylee Atkins. And Pennout Baptist Academy, Kathleen Hutchins. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Madison Blunt. And last but not least, from Putnam Edge High School, Kirsten Peters. Again, to our young people, we are extremely proud of you. As Commissioner Campbell comes forward, there's one thing that we always like to leave you with, and I learned this in the third grade, we'd say it every day, it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody." Looking at each one of you standing here today, you guys are somebody. Reach for the stars, continue to dream, and continue to do well, and your dreams will be on you. They will come upon you. Thank you, guys, for all the work you do, and we look for more great things, and for you guys leading this community. Again, thank you. We'll stand in recess. If we can have all the students come together, we'll take one picture for the newspaper. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting back to order. Move on to item number two on the agenda, which is public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, their yellow speaker's card's in the back of the room. My twang came out. Please fill out the card and bring it forward. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Item number three. Item A, Adopt Resolution Number 2015-12-87, authorizing renewal of employee assistance contract. Benefits programmed with Vanessa Townsend and Associates for one year beginning 1/11/17. B, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-88, authorizing reduction of code enforcement fines levied against 420 and 422 Kirby Street in the amount of $20,100 to $500, provided the fine is paid within 30 days of this action, or the fine returns to $20,100. C, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-89, authorizing a three-month extension of the temporary golf course management agreement with Hertz Golf LLC from 1/11/17 to 3/31/17. D, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-90, awarding the turf maintenance bid to Ashley's Lawn Service LLC in the amount of $24,000, and to Sportscase Services Incorporated in the amount of $39,309, authorizing execution of all contract agreements associated with this bid award. E, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-91, confirming a short list of qualified responding firms for RFP Number 2016-11, Architecture, Engineering, and Landscape Architecture Continuing Services. F, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-92, rejecting all proposals for third-party sludge processing, treatment, and disposal system services at the wastewater treatment plant received the response to RFP Number 2016-007, and ceasing further negotiations with respondents. G, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-93, authorizing the purchase of wetland mitigation credits in the amount of $315,000 from Sundue Mitigation Bank LLC related to the airport obstruction pre-removal and mitigation, 100% grant funded. H, Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-94, authorizing issuance of special events permit number 17-05 for the 2017 airport community open house fly-in, setting forth provisions of the permit and fees granting permission to exceed allowable noise levels, granting permission for all aircraft and aerial operations. I, approve request items for special events permit number 16-50, wedding and reception at the St. John's River Education Center, 12/18/16, from 11:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Felicia Nelson applicant. One, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels throughout duration of event amplified music. Two, allow the closure on North First Street from River Street Parking Lot to St. John's Avenue. J, accept resignation of Joe Pickens from the Palacka Planning Board with regrets. K, reappoint George Deloach and Eddie M. Wilson to the Palacka Planning Board for three-year terms, to expire December 31st, 2019 incumbent members. L, reappoint Michael Gagnon and Pat Wilson to the Palacka Code Enforcement Board as members with general contracting and engineering experience respectively, for three-year terms, to expire September 2019. M, incorporate final results of the November 8th, 2016 general election Commissioners Group One and Three into the record of proceedings. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed?
Eight.
Any other items? Also, item I. Are there any other items besides H and I? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve items, all items except for H and I.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, Adopt Resolution 2016-12-94, issuing some special events permit number 17-05 for the 2017 airport fly-in.
Our chairperson is here.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes, Mayor, how can I answer any questions?
Well, one of the concerns we had, oh, one of the concerns we had is I was recently informed about the fees for the fly-in. One reason that I wanted this item removed was to discuss the fees for the fly-in, and looks as though we were removing this event to complete special events permitting. What are the fees on this?
Okay. Anybody have anything here? The permit fee is $300, because it is a Class A event with a large number of people that are coming. The law enforcement is four officers, seven hours, $644. Fire personnel is two fire people at four hours, 184. Public works personnel is 336. And then we have one green rollout container for $15. We have price margin tables and chairs, Friday to Sunday, 225. Booker Park table and chairs, Friday through Sunday, 130. And security positive for the table and chairs, 150, totally up, 1984.
1984.
Mayor, this is a city event that is being put on.
That was the purpose of me asking the question.
Okay, this is a city event, and the city should take care of all those expenses because it is sponsored by us.
Was that a motion?
Motion to.
Second.
So there was a motion for the city to waive all costs associated with this event, and there's a second on the floor? Is that correct?
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there further discussion?
Oh, we're giving them permission. We're permitting them to go ahead and do it, 'cause it was on there when I called it. We just wanna take the call stop.
And the motion includes approval of the item as well?
Okay, yes.
Yes, I'm separating that. We can, it's gonna be included in the item?
No, included, all of it.
It's included based on the motion? We can separate, I mean, is that, is it fine for us to separate based on your motion?
Yeah, if you wanna do that, I just figured we could go ahead and grant it for them and take over our responsibility.
There's a motion to waive costs associated with the event, the fees associated with the event, and there's a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the item? There's a motion to approve the item and a second. My Commissioner Campbell, any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Yule, also, we have some members from the Airport Advisory Board. Would you please stand at this time so we can recognize you guys?
We gotta be clear, why are you playing here?
And, Jody, do we wanna come forward?
I just wanna say.
You wanna come forward?
Thank you all very, very much, and congratulations for your 17 years. I'd like to, I'm here representing, of course, the Airport Advisory Board, which include Mr. Wayne McLean, Mr. John Browning, Ms. Melissa Miller, Dana Jones, Hugh Rawls, Ken Johnson, and Mr. Jeff Hathorn. And I'd like to start by saying Merry Christmas to each one of you from all of us. That was a sentiment that I'm supposed to pass on, and we hope you and your families have a wonderful holiday if we don't see you before that time. I'd also like to say just a few more words, maybe to update a few things from our perspective about the airport. Maybe I could start by saying thanks to Commissioner Brown and to Terry for their support of our airport, for coming to the meetings, for all of your participation. It's very huge. I'd also like to say a special thanks to Mr. Holmes. There's so many times, and I don't know whether all of you know that, that we contact him, and it's most of the time after hours. We all work hard for a living too, and most of the time, by the time we get around to dealing with an issue, it's after hours. And he has been so faithful to give, as you have, especially Ms. Brown, so much above and beyond the call of duty, and it's wonderful to see that in our city. One time, I even got him in his tree stand, and I do think that's maybe a record to have him answer that phone call and help us with a problem.
It's not a bad day.
And if I can just carry on for another minute, our city has a lot of needs. We have needs in our school systems, we have needs in our jobs, a lack of jobs here. And I wanna say a special word of thanks to each one of you for your vigilance and what you do for our community from my perspective, to help our community grow and to maybe come out of some of the things that we've been in that we need to grow from. And I liked your support of the children, it's so beautiful, because it is our future. Change happens when we, the people, work together, when we commit to one another and commit to our families, to make our community a better place, as you said earlier. I can't help but think of the words of Carl Fley that he said, and I know he's all y'all's friend too, one time, but he said, "If you don't stand up, you won't be seen. If you don't speak up, you won't be heard. And if you don't show up, you won't get it done." And those are very important things, and I wanna thank you all for what you do all the time for our community. Our city airport has enjoyed a lot of growth, very good growth, some $15 million worth of improvements in 10 years. That's huge. And for a poor community, that's really big stuff. And it's such a flagmark place, as each of you know, and I know y'all visit all the time. Our city airport also has very effective guidance, and when I, I can't help but stand before you to represent the airport and not go here. When we think of our airport, Mr. Yule has done a wonderful job of taking our little community airport and making it such a wonderful, welcomed home and comfortable place for people to fly into. He's really helped us an awful lot. And much- Uh, he's really helped us an awful lot and much beyond the paycheck too. You know, there's so many times when I talk to John, it's always in the weekends or in the evenings and, you know, he's not on the clock, I don't think. I don't think you all pay him for that.
He's never off the clock.
It's very, very much a nice thing. And then I also have to say a, a word of thanks for Ms. Barbara Cloud of the FDOT and you all know what she does for us, but it's just huge. And also she gives beyond her normal. She does not have to do all the things she does for us, but she's taken it to heart and she really has donated to our city and to help us be more of what we ought to be. And then I also have to say a big thank you to Andrew Halesco of Passero and Associates. Um, I've had the privilege of being around the airport for a long time and in my viewpoint, we were nowhere before he came into our lives. And without him, I don't think that we would be able to do all the projects that the FDOT would fund for us because it takes a lot of energy to get them done, to make them click. And he's done such a wonderful job to help us to accomplish all these projects in efficient, complete and timely manner. But not only have we had good growth and good guidance, we've also had excellent gain. And, um, this fly-in that we celebrate, and I've got a, I assume that y'all have already seen a flyer. I, unfortunately, I only have four in my car, but if you want to pass them down. This fly-in that we're gonna have in, uh, one month, a few weeks from now, on the twenty-eighth of, uh, January, um, has done a lot for, for Palaca. It's expanded our footprint from Marathon Key to Atlanta and our fuel sales have gone through the roof and we're really setting records, um, which is nice. Our tea hangars have a waiting list of thirty people, I think John told us at our meeting last Wednesday. So it's wonderful to see and this fly-in has a lot to do with it. It's, it's your city fly-in, it's our city fly-in, it's a fly-in that you guys and we are putting on to grow our footprint and our awareness in our community and to help make it a better place for people to move to and for businesses to come. And I also want to say that not only has that brought money gains, but if we were ever, it could be compensated for the, the, um, shooting range that's on our property, for the fire station that's on our property, for the three freshwater wells that serve the city of Palaca and for the gray water disposal fields that are on our property.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
We're gonna do it. We could actually turn a profit to the city every year after our hundred thousand dollar amount. So, um, you know, we think that there's something to that and it, it, it's all numbers. It is all trade one side for the other, but it's a real thing and maybe we can look forward to that someday.
He was doing so well. Time's up.
Okay, one more question. So if you haven't had a chance or haven't heard, Harrison Ford's put out a new movie, Living in the Age of Airplanes. And it's a beautiful, beautiful documentary on the economic impact of aviation in a community. And I'd like to encourage you all to, to see it when you can. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, while he, while he wa- while he walking to his seat, I would like to say that all of the airport, uh, committees are volunteer people and they come every month. And they look, they, they're, uh, some of them are from other places and they fly all over the world and they have that experience. And they're bringing a huge, what, what's the kind of plane they're talking about bringing to us now? For the kids to, for folks to see?
On a C forty-six.
So for you all who know what that is, it's supposed to be a great big plane.
Can you give Ms. Mary a ride on it, John?
If you, if you haven't...
So again, thank you, Judd, and, and thank everyone on Airport Advisory Committee. If you have not experienced the fly-in and you live in this community, you're missing out on a treat. It is a huge event. It's a wonderful showing for this community and you, and it has to be a part of your calendar.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you guys for all the work you do. Item I on the agenda, approve request for special events permit number sixteen dash fifty. Uh, Corleus Brown, can you please accompany Mr. Crowe? Set your name for the record, sir.
Yeah.
And your address.
Mayor, uh, Corleus Brown.
And can you give your address just for the record?
One nineteen on the road, Satsiva, Florida, eight twenty-nine.
And I pulled this, I pulled this item. Mr. Brown is on the agenda for this item for a wedding and reception at the Saint Johns River Education Center on twelve eighteen sixteen of this year. Mr. Brown, can you just, for the record, tell us where you're, where were you employed? What's your career and where, where were your last travels?
Sir, um, I am a United States Marine for the past six and a half years. Career changed about three months ago. Uh, joined the United States Air Force Reserve. Uh, previous posting was Kenya, Nairobi at the United States Embassy. Um, additionally before that, um, Helsinki, Finland at the United States Embassy. And then before that, uh, stationed in Washington DC, uh, Quantico, Virginia, uh, Washington DC area as a part of the Quick Reaction Force deployed to, uh, the Ukraine, South Sudan, Turkey and various parts of Europe.
So needless to say, he's been very busy. He's one of Palaca's own. Uh, I called you up here because we wanted to make sure that we thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that we thank you for the way that you represent this community and to let you know that we are very proud of you. And so we want to give you a round of applause for... Uh, he's, he's the young man who's getting married at the River Center. He is the, the son of John Nelson and Felicia Nelson. And, uh, he didn't think it robbery to fly back into the country to have a wedding at the River Center. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve item I on the agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Item four. Request authorized execution of the Palaca Housing Authority's annual forms, determination and exemption of categorical exclusions, twenty-four CRF, fifty-four, fifty-eight point thirty-four A and fifty-eight point thirty-five B on behalf of Palaca Housing Authority's site improvements, fiscal year twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one, CFP, AMP eleven, twelve and fifteen, and certifying its consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. John Nelson, Executive Director, we have Mr. Aaron Robinson here on behalf of the Housing Authority. Aaron Robinson.
Good evening.
I gave you a new name.
Sounds good. Uh, we, I'm just here just to determine, Mr. Nelson's not going to be here tonight, so I'm here to entertain questions or report any of your concerns too.
As I would turn any check that I post?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay.
Well, I always have concerns.
And we talked with they, I talked with they it, so he said he didn't see we getting on new houses still. I guess we're in pretty good state.
Is there a motion?
Make motion to accept there.
There's a motion to approve item number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. My Commissioner Board, is there any, any discussion? Questions then call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you don't mind, with your, uh, permission, I have some information I would leave with you.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the Chorus Neighborhood Grant that we plan to, uh, apply for next year and that even up, uh, starting from what we hope to accomplish.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
May I say Merry Christmas?
Item number five on the agenda. Resolution authorizing the following nominal lease renewals effective January first, two thousand sixteen. Keep Putnam Beautiful on the lease of two thou- two hundred five North Second Street. Palaca Art Lea- Lease on the Tillman House. Part of Putnam Food Pantry on the portion of the Cooper Building. Palaca Duplicate Bridge Club Lease on the portion of the Cooper Building and a request for a change of utilities billing classification. Barbara Rappamale.
The resolution only covers the renewal of the leases. Can you help me go ahead and read that?
So the renewal of leases, item four A is separate, correct?
Um, item four A would be a separate discussion. The resolution only covers the renewal of the four leases.
Okay, you read that for the record?
A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the renewal and execution of non-lease agreements on sitting on real properties of Palaca Art Lees because keep Putnam Beautiful, Putnam Duplicate Bridge Club and Part of Putnam Food Pantry Incorporated and providing lease terms.
Most of you'll please.
Second. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four A, request for change utility billing classification. Four A?
It's actually sub-paragraph four under five, so really those are...
No, sorry, five, five, five sub-paragraph five. Five sub-four A.
Five four A.
That was our district in high school.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to take this item?
Sure.
Okay. This item was a request from the Palaca Duplicate Bridge Club. They're requesting that the city, uh, look at, uh, changing the designation of the property, uh, for the water billing services. But the city of Palaca has two categories, I believe, correct me, Mr. Reynolds, is a residential and a non-residential. And this is a, uh, commercial building, a, uh, not-for-profit building, uh, so it's in our ordinance. City manager didn't have the authority nor the discretion to change the, uh, request nor does the city manager believe that this is something that we need to, uh, to do tonight. It's just my opinion, uh, but I do have some concerns about what this will do to other council within the city if we make an exception for, for this one particular agency. Voice my concerns with the folks that, that have came in and spoke to me about it on numerous occasions, but as, uh, uh, due diligence, they wanted to be heard tonight in front of the city commission and so they, they made a request to be on the city commission's agenda. They supplied, uh, a red notification that I also forwarded, uh, out in the agenda packets for your, uh, for your review as well.
Is there anyone present from the Bridge Club? Any?
We have one member back here.
Is there anything that you want to say, ma'am?
Um, not really. Uh, I never...
You have to come forward if you want to speak and say your name and address for the record.
Brandon Myers, two four four Crystal Cove Drive.
Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Pardon?
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Our problem is our income has dropped considerably because we have a lot of less members and, uh, we are only there about six hours on Mondays, one day a week. And there's no way that we use that much water, over a hundred dollars a month. And it's really becoming a financial burden on the membership.
Do, do we need to have somebody go out and see if they have a lease?
Well, that's just the base rate for commercial.
It's, yeah, it's a basic hundred dollars a month, the way I understand it, if it's commercial, which we really aren't commercial.
It's just non-residential. It's anything that's non-residential is gonna be considered commercial, uh, and that's the, and that's probably the biggest issue. Um, if you're, if it's not a residential property, then you're subject to that minimum, that minimum payment regardless of what you use. And so that's the unfortunate side of where you are regardless of if you use, you know, a thousand gallon or four thousand gallon, you're gonna be in that same situation. And that's the lowest possible rent for that property, I mean, I'm sorry, water bill for that property. Any, any questions or comments from the commission?
It's unfortunate and, and I, I guess it's unfortunate that, uh, that you got, that you don't have as many members that you used to have. Uh, but one of the things that I'm afraid of, if we actually approve this tonight, we're gonna be saying a president for other nonprofits to come in and ask for the same thing. That might be renting our properties as well. And I don't think that we want to set that precedent because it cost us, uh, X number of dollars to, uh, provide. And we gotta still pay for the chemicals, we still gotta pay for the distribution, we still have to pay for all those things that comes along with that as well. So, uh, those are my comments concerning it.
I mean, and taking into consideration what they're getting the building for, a dollar a year, I mean, I mean, like I said, it's an unfortunate situation and we don't want to open a book that will never really be able to be closed. Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Myers, for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to now, item, uh...
We don't have to...
Five four A.
We, we have to vote on it because it's a request?
I was asking that we have to vote on that.
Because a request came in formally, we have to.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to deny the request to change the classification.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. It's one of the unfortunate things that we do. Item six on the agenda, resolution authorizing execution of the Water Taxi Dock Operation Agreement with the Palaca Boathouse Marina LLC.
A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a test of water taxis and dock operation services agreement. Would you like to vote out for me that?
I'll be happy to.
Go ahead.
Second.
Um, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is, uh, the result of conversations that we've been having for quite some time, uh, with the, uh, Mr. Legasse and, and his counsel, um, regarding, uh, a manner of moving forward with, uh, with his beginning to operate the one boat that we do have now in our possession. Obviously, we're kind of charting, forgive the nautical references, but we're kind of, uh, supplying uncharted waters with this and, uh, I think understandably...
No climate change.
Right. Legasse, Mr. Legasse, uh, has some concerns, uh, so that, uh, about, about moving forward with something that hasn't been tried before in Palaca. And of course, the city has concerns about, about the financial aspects of, of the, of the operation and I believe that what you have in front of you is about the best compromise we could come up with, to allow Mr. Legasse to start, start operating the boat and, uh, start generating some experience with the boat and, and hopefully some, uh, some usage of the boat that may even, hopefully will increase as he, as he moves forward. And, and then, um, as you see from the agreement, we anticipate having or hoping to have a, a, uh, a master agreement that completes more than just the operation of the one boat by the end of January of, uh, seventeen, as I recall. Uh, so this is a, a starting point, if you will. The boat's there. He's been, um, um, housing it at his facility for, well, I guess since it was arrived, since it's arrived and moved from the dry dock. So, uh, it's a way of us moving forward.
Okay. We've, thank you, Mr. Holmes. We've got a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. No clapping, Mr. Brown.
I could, I could dance if y'all are moving. Table top.
Mr.?
That's all right.
Mr. Legasse or, or Attorney Curry, you guys have anything you want to say?
I figured that would get you guys.
Oh, yes.
We just appreciate it. We're ready to, to move forward. Mr. Legasse is ready to, to go ahead and get things underway, so... And I believe the agreement that we have, as Mr. Holmes said, we've tried to cover all the uncertainty that, that we're all gonna face, but it's a step in the right direction.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving into public hearing, item number seven on the agenda, twenty-seven oh four and twenty-seven oh six Reed Street. Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Commercial Land Use and Zoning to Property from Putnam County C one Commercial General Light to City C one Commercial, General Commercial Owner Applicants, Meang Kayla, Tong Yu, Meang and Ed Bond.
So, yeah.
Item A, Annexation Ordinance, first reading.
The ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent areas here identified as twenty-seven oh six Reed Street located in section one, township ends out, range twenty-six east.
Township ten south, range twenty-six east. Public records in Putnam County, Florida contiguous to boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County C one commercial general light to C one commercial general for parcel identified as twenty-seven oh four and twenty-seven oh six Reed Street, located in section one, township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight of the agenda, ordinance rezoning property located at the southwest corner of River and Moore Streets from R one AA slash HD single family residential and historic district to R one AA single family residential removal from historic district Norman Jutris owner applicant, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from R one AA dash HD residential, single family historic district to R one AA residential, single family for a parcel identified as undeveloped land located at the southwest corner of River Street and Moore Street located in section forty-two, township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion and a second. We're open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Commander, did we do a PUD for this particular piece of property?
I thought it'd be a PUD.
Mr. Norwood, this was a PUD, I think back prior to my time. The commission approved this as a PUD. That PUD expired about a year ago, so if it reverts back to the zone it was, Mr. Jutris will have to come back and renegotiate essentially the new PUD.
Any other discussion?
How long do, when we do the PUDs, how long do they last? How many years?
I believe this PUD was a seven-year PUD. Don't quote me on that, but it's somewhere around that.
This probably was outside of that, right? Was this probably outside of the PUD?
This was actually part, no, you're right, it was not part of the PUD.
This is outside of the PUD.
It was north of River Street. The mill, actual mill site.
So, any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item nine, ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the operation of medical marijuana treatment centers licensing dispensing and cultivation organizations within the City of Palaca.
And ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the operation of medical marijuana treatment centers and licensed dispensing organizations within the City of Palaca for a period of six months unless it's rescinded or extended by a subsequent ordinance or by a subsequent amendment to the city's land development regulations regarding regulation of marijuana treatment centers and licensed dispensing organizations providing for conflict separability and effective date.
Is there a motion? There's a motion. Is there a second? Got a motion and a second? Is there, we'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion from the commission? I think this is a housekeeping measure that's been taken all across the state until there's been some alignment between state and federal laws as it relates to dispensaries. And so it can be rescinded at any time if so chosen. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think it would be imperative that I at least inform the city commission. I have received an email regarding this very item as to our stance, the City of Palaca's stance on the on these facilities. Someone's requesting information to come into the City of Palaca to open up not one but several venues of this that came in late, so that's why we're not having it in your books tonight. But just wanted, as a matter of record, to divulge that information that we've already had a request from an individual about not only just one, but how many they can actually open up within the municipality.
How many regularly, how many could it be?
I guess I just wanted to state that we're not taking action based on the request that has come from the public city manager. We're making this request until the state and whatnot sets some guidelines so that we all know how to move appropriately.
Yes, sir.
I know a little bit about the subject because I can't deal with the City of Palaca regarding this subject, but I am working on behalf of a client regarding ordinances that are being considered by some other governmental entities. The state authorized the authorized six growers in the state to grow medical marijuana. The state took no action regulating how it is to be dispensed, instead leaving that to the local governments to do so, take the action. As the mayor indicated, there's some issues that are being worked through and the county, for instance, Putnam County has passed a moratorium. If you don't write now, then since the county has, you're probably going to be a pretty ripe target for a while, so. Believe it or not, those that obtain permission to grow the marijuana, medical marijuana, don't want to see a proliferation of dispensaries. Believing that if they, if that happens, the, you know, the purpose of the of the law that authorized the growing of medical marijuana might be frustrated and and the whole, the whole idea might be tainted, so the moratorium is, I would recommend it.
Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item ten, city manager administrative reports. Ms. Crowe. Ms. Tucker. That's the shortest one you've given so far. Chief.
I was talking about Chief Lambert.
Just wanted to let the commission know that a couple of months back, we began reviewing the Sheriff's Office reference to K nine. As it appeared in the paper this past weekend, Palaca Police Department has taken responsibility for K nine Tango. He's been assigned to Officer Casio. He's now a member of the Palaca Police Department. It was donated by the Sheriff's Office and we are looking forward to bring both Officer K nine, Casio and Tango before the commission and run first to be.
They're both, they're both officers. Thank you. Chief Lambert, stop that. Mr. Yul is in the back talking, so we'll let him go. Mr. Holmes.
All I have is the item that's mentioned in the agenda. If you'd like me to discuss that now.
Go ahead.
There's been a request received by the city that the city commission in essence conducted rehearing of a conditional use application that was denied by the planning board and that was subsequently heard by you and denied by you. There's now been a request that you rehear the denial. Our code makes no provision for that. Our code specifies that if someone is not happy with the decision of the planning commission regarding conditional use, they have thirty days to basically seek your review, which did occur in the case. After your review, the next step, if someone wished to take it, would be to go to circuit court. There isn't a provision in our code for you to hear it again. I'm concerned about the precedent that would be set if you begin rehearing appeals because I don't know where that ends and also it's not provided for in the code. So it's, I think, recommendation of staff. I think Mr. Crowe agrees with me that the commission not rehear the appeal that you've already heard. Obviously, if you have a reason for wanting to discuss that, we certainly will and ultimately it's your decision, but there isn't no particular reason has been given, i.e. it's not been stated that something inappropriate occurred during your your consideration, to the best of my knowledge. It's just a request that it be reheard by you. So it's with permission from the commission, we were going to advise the person seeking the rehearing that there's no provision for it and that the request for rehearing wouldn't be approved.
I entertain a motion at this time.
I'm going to make a motion to go along with the attorney's recommendation to not hear.
There's a motion, there's a motion to accept staff's recommendation to deny. Second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
One more thing, you're the proud owner of a piece of property now? You won it for a hundred dollars?
Far less than what was budgeted.
That's those outstanding negotiating skills of SWAT did that right.
Absolutely, yeah. Now all you have to do is pay the taxes on it and decide what you're going to do with it.
But is it, are the taxes way up?
Five or six grand, I believe.
Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Gregors.
Palanumary plans underway for a city Christmas party. Do you want to talk about that or?
Well, we'll save it for, you can go ahead and talk about it now, that's fine.
Well, palanumarily, it's scheduled for December twenty-second, Thursday night, which is
Next week?
Next Thursday night, six p.m. at the Palaca Boat House. Dinner entertainment.
Mr. Mayor, you going to dance on the table then?
Call them what kind of food you got. I don't drink, so it's got to be in the food.
Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Holmes talked about the purchase of the property, so that was good. This afternoon at two-thirty, Finance Director Matt Reynolds and myself and the and Mayor Carol Hill met with the folks out of Tallahassee, the legislative audit folks. We had our exit interview today. There was a few items that was discussed. Mostly housekeeping items, things that we need to do better record keeping type stuff. No serious, nothing really found that we have done anything wrong. The only major thing that I saw today or heard today was the fact that the money we have been using out of better place, we all said our debt service at the golf course. Your previous city manager read the Florida statutes and felt that it was appropriate to use those dollars. However, the legislative audit committee does not agree. They also brought some AGO opinions today that we can also research, but that is the biggest thing that we found out today. They're done with us. They're going to be drafting their their letter in about two to three weeks and sending to the the city. It looks like we've got a clean bill of health coming, nothing that we cannot overcome because it was simply a matter of housekeeping for the City of Palaca. I think that's something that this commission, especially Youth Commissioner Norwood, should be very proud of is the fact that these things that were, the allegations that were made were found to be untruthful and and so we were moving forward with this new chapter. We'll have eighteen months to comply with the with the findings and they'll come back and make sure that we've done what we're supposed to do. But again, I want to say this for the City of Palaca. When the information and when the allegations were made, the city commission had already instructed the city manager and the finance director to budget twenty-five thousand dollars, draft an RFP to go out and seek firms to come in and do an external audit just to make sure that we were already doing the things we were supposed to be doing, you know, so that's a testament to you folks. Again, I think it's a wonderful thing that this commission was forward thinking. I think it's a wonderful thing that this audit is behind us and I think the findings themselves are nothing that we need to be concerned with and I look forward, forward again to closing this chapter. But again, that's where we're at today. Kudos to Mr. Reynolds and his staff for doing all that they did during those four months, I believe it was, Mr. Reynolds. They had nothing but positive things to say about the staff and we'll move forward.
Yeah, thank you guys for the work that you did with the Audit Committee. I'm glad with, I'm happy with the results that came out. Item number eleven on the agenda is a request to request to approve funding, five hundred dollars. I won't say for disadvantaged youth, I'll say for youth of the City of Palaca. Going to Orlando Magic game. So that I can finish, this is the second year that we've had an opportunity to take kids from the City of Palaca to the Orlando Magic game. I won't recognize any motions until I finish talking. And this is, this is a great opportunity. Our kids get to go to this game, they get to meet the players, they go on the court, they participate in the games and passer on associates Andrew Halesko, they've been very gracious and helping put this event on and we appreciate that. Now I'll entertain your motion. I didn't recognize the first one. There's a motion in the second. It's your last motion. There's a motion on the floor and a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Questions been called. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir. To Commissioner Norwood, thank you for your dedication to this commission for the last seventeen years. You've served with dignity and respect. One of the things that I admire you about, even when performing under pressure, you still handle everything with dignity and respect. And just like Mayor Hill said earlier, your looks from across the room could, you could tell. Yeah, and your kicks from across the room were all recognized in one way or another. But again, thank you for paving the way for individuals like myself to be able to sit up here. And I promise to carry it, continue to carry it with dignity and respect following what you have already set before. So again, thank you for seventeen years. Make yourself available in case we do call. Gone from the position, but never too far away that you can't be reached. But again, thank you so much and that is it.
Mr. Board.
First of all, I'd like to thank his family for allowing him to be loaned out to the city for the city's good and like to thank him for his leadership and his environmental skills that he has employed over the last seventeen years. You just don't get that every day and this institutional knowledge is leaving this board. Also, the other things that he's gotten over the years, you know, all the phone calls, all the meetings he's attended, the city business travel, all of those things matter to our citizens and serving the community. It's not something that's easy, it's outside of the normal scope of work, so. Again, we commend you for all you've done for the city and we look forward to continuing working with you and just don't tell us looks like that. Again, thank you for all your service and wish you well in your future endeavors.
Vice Mayor Brown. Gotcha. Yes, ma'am.
She's pulling ring.
On that note, we had a wonderful time at the legislative conference. We had an opportunity to do a great exercise with the Florida League of Mayors. It talked about personality traits of the commissioners and how to identify those traits so that we can all work together more effectively. I realize that me and Vice Mayor Brown are on different ends of the spectrum and on the axis, but it talked about cohesiveness and the way that certain commissions are able to operate from that. It's an exercise that I want to bring to Palaca because it talks about those individuals who are innovators and individuals who are relationship people and how there has to be a a great mix of the two in order to be able to function. And so it really gave me great insight as to the mix that's on this board. It's, it was an awesome exercise. I think the conference overall was great for all of us and it was an opportunity to bring some things back to this community and we saw them happen as early as the CRA meeting. Commissioner Norwood, there's really not much more to be said. You've handled your position with dignity and class. We're going to miss you. You've definitely been the person who kind of anchored me through this learning curve and I really appreciate that. I appreciate the example of someone who cares for the community, someone who is able to to process different ideas and stay calm throughout that entire process. My patience will be far less with you gone, but I will be working diligently to remember the lessons that have come from those silent kicks that come from visual affirmations. But we thank you for your work. We thank you for your labor and it's been a pleasure working with you. I think not only over the course of these last couple of years have I had an opportunity to be a colleague, but I've had an opportunity to be a friend. And I think that's been one of the greatest parts of working with this commission as a whole because it's allowed us to uniformly work towards what's best for this community. We don't always agree. I think many people thought we would uniformly agree over the course of time, but we don't always agree, but we always agree that we want what's best for this community and that's what it's all about. Vice Mayor Brown. I can't top that cake.
We brought a cake so we can all have some cake before we leave. You already know how I feel about you because I've been telling y'all this thing. And so I hope that we can have a piece of cake with you and if you, whatever you want to do with the rest, I know you got a kid at home. You can do it. I think they got some. I hope everybody here is kind of, everybody get a piece and then we'll go from there. But I'll miss you, James, because I won't have nobody for us. Love you, darling. They said they gonna kick me, but I got some support coming too, so.
So we also want to make sure we recognize Commissioner-elect Tammy McCaskill-Williams in the back. She joined us this week at the conference. We look forward to working with you. We can't wait. You guys, this guy is actually, he's setting the bar high, but we're sure you're going to be able to handle it, so we're looking forward to hitting the ground running. And our last comments come from you, Commissioner Norwood.
You know, I've got nothing but respect for each one of these commissioners and not only commissioners, but also staff as well. It's been a tremendous, tremendous ride. And I think, you know, I couldn't have done everything that I've done without other commissioners and the staff as well. And not only this commission, this commission, but I appreciate the commission in the past as well. And I want to thank God most of all that he's given me the ability to give this adopt that to each commission, because each commission is different. In fact, and I will talk more about this commission than I will any other commission, is this commission is very hands-on. It has a clear-cut direction of where it's going and you stay very close to the venue that you're headed for and that's to be committed, that's to be committed. But I will also say, the commission as well, that you have a very good staff, very good staff. Trust it, trust your staff. Lean on them to get all the knowledge and get all the information that you can in order to make a decision. And you make your decision based on the data that's in front of you rather than the crowd that's in front of you. Because as you will, as you will find out, as you read scripture, you will always find, find out, trial is very seldom ever right. And sometimes you have to stand alone and stand by yourself, but you know, as scripture says, take a stand. And then once you've done all that you can to stand anyway. So I want to say thank you not only to this commission, but to this community as well. As a commissioner, you, this community has embraced me, has supported me, given me the proxy and trusted me with decisions that's going to, that would carry us into the future from two thousand up until now. And I want to say thank you. I'm very appreciative and very humble by the fact that this community saw that in me and gave me an opportunity to be its representative for those years. And with that, I would just like to say.
It ain't no bye, you gonna be back.